Okay, I'll call this work session in the Greenbale City Council to order. As the record reflects, it's five o'clock and we will be going into executive session. So we'll be back here at six o'clock. Thank you for coming today.
Apologize for us being ten minutes late. Thank you for coming tonight. I'll call this regular session of the Greenville City Council to order and let the record reflect it's about 10 minutes after six. I'd like you to stand for the invocation by Pastor Mike Pisney of the Mineral Heights Baptist Church. Thank you for being here today.
Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you that we're able to be here tonight and to also come to you in prayer. God, we thank you that you are a God who actually cares about us. You care about our need, you care about this city. And God, I thank you for each one who serves our city. I pray that you'd help them as they do their work. I pray that they would trust in you. I pray that you would guide them to do what's best. God, I also pray for each person who speaks here this evening. Lord, help them to say what they ought to say but not say anything that they should not say. Lord, we need your help. Our nation needs you. The city needs you, and I pray that you'd help us. I'd look to you for that help, and we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. I have a proclamation tonight. JB. Thank you. Harry, you did not. It's good to see you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. I've known JB, I suppose, forty years or so. One of the things I remember about him is he was always busy with his car business and his ranching business, but he always stopped to participate in the club championship, although he didn't at Oak Creek, even though he didn't get to play golf very much, he always was participating in that. We've known him for a long, long time. I have a proclamation tonight that I'd like to read to recognize your 101st birthday. Whereas we are proud to celebrate your birthday, a distinguished member of our community whose life and legacy serve as an inspiration to all, whereas you were born on April the 18th, 1924, in Hunt County, and spent your early years on a 126-acre cotton farm outside of Greenville where you learned the values of hard work and perseverance. Whereas after graduating from high school in 1941, you pursued his, your passion for agriculture at East Texas State University before answering the call to serve your country by enlisting in the Army Air Corps during World War II. You did that in, I've got the dates here, in May the 10th of 1943 during the height of the, of the, of World War II. You were discharged in, finally in March the 7th of 1946. I'm sure you remember that. Sure you do.
I do.
Yeah. Following your honorable service, you furthered your education at Sam Houston State Teachers' College, earned a degree in education, and went on to build a successful career in the automobile industry. For fifty years, you were a dedicated professional in car sales, ultimately achieving your dream of opening a dealership called JB McNatt Auto, which you managed for over twenty-three years with integrity and commitment. Whereas you shared a remarkable seventy-two-year marriage with his beloved wife, Lydia, until her passing in 2015, demonstrating a lifetime of love, devotion, and family values. Whereas your contributions to our community, your service to our nation, your enduring spirit of entrepreneurship and dedication deserve our highest recognition and deepest gratitude. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim, April the 18th, this coming April the 18th, 2025, a JB McNatt Day in Greenville, to honor your 101st birthday and in recognition of extraordinary life service and achievements. And we're very, very proud to do this and, and it's just incredible what you've done. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, please. I was raised on a farm. We didn't have 126 acres till way up in, we was out on the farm, and we was sharecropper. You talk about poor. We the poorest people in the world. We had nothing. We had nothing. This gentleman here can tell you, we had nothing. But I've been blessed. I've been blessed beyond all expectation. The Lord has been good to me, and I just thank for the service I got to do for the United States Army Air Corps, and if they called me, I go again.
Oh, good.
I appreciate it.
Oh, okay. Yes, I think we have. I'm sorry. That's good.
Mr. McNatt, on behalf of the State Representative Brent Money in the Office of the State of Representatives, Mr. Oates reached out to us and said, hey, we got a special veteran that's turning 101 years old. So what we decided to do is get a flag flown over to Capitol, and we're going to present that to you.
Oh, good. Oh, I did my turn. Thank you.
So this is the flag.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
And then I'm going to go ahead and read this certificate real quick. All right, so this certifies that the Texas flag here with presented to JB McNatt by Rep. Representative Brent Money in the Texas House of Representatives. This was flown on the Capitol of the Southern State of Texas on April 3rd, 2025, in honor of your birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
their, when you're on the roadway, you can see the old building in the back. So we've been fencing off the playground over there, but we stopped because we've been getting people on the playground now. And so I went to the city here last year and spoke to a gentleman on the Public Works Department, and he said, that is an old pump station, I believe. It's been offline since nineteen eighty-five or eighty-eight. And so I went over and looked at it the other day. The pump house is caving in, and it's got vultures living in it, and there's a water tank sitting there, an old water tank that's rusted in. So what we were just, what the church wanted to ask is, is there any way we can take over that that little driveway with, it's just a driveway in a building at the end, like a storage building at the end of it, but it's caving in. So we thought what we'd do is is just clean it all up, tear it down, or it's actually caving in. So we just finished cleaning it up and fenced it off, and we would take care of all of it if the city is willing to let us go ahead and annex it. We would pay for everything, take care of it, and just, but they said they're never going to use it again. It's been offline since the late, mid to late eighties. He said there's, it's been bypassed, it'll never be used again. So, but we would clean it up and run the fence on across here to keep people from walking back there and whatever, whatever they do. So that's what I was, that's what they asked me to come here and speak to y'all about tonight. And the grid, the grid that I gave you, it's actually off. It should be over. It's just a driveway with a old building right there at the end of it, and it's caving in, and there's no water. And then there's a big oak tree that's stood beside it that we, it's on the city property. We do cut on it when it starts falling in, so we've been cutting it down a little bit, so don't get upset about the dead oak tree. But how much time do I have left? Oh, good. See, don't you ever call my church and say, I did this in three minutes.
Well, I think we have your contact information.
You do. I've got the church email and all that.
The city manager will be contacting you.
Okay. I appreciate y'all's time. Y'all have a blessed one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and audience, and those of you online. My name is Dennis Carpenter. I live at thirty-seven oh three Coyote Crossing in God's Country, also known as Greenville, Texas. I'm here tonight because I feel I owe you an apology. Most everyone is aware that I work for Coyote Crossing over there and the things that we do there, but we work for Wildcatter Realty Advisors. And as such, I don't think I've shared with you exactly what it is that I do for Wildcatter. So I'd like to share with you that my position is Vice President of Community Relations. That means every day that I wake up on Coyote Crossing and my energies and my passions are to move the Green Belt Project in Greenville further along. As such, it's my commitment and my purpose into the community to do exactly that. I've spent years putting together a kind of a history of doing, trying to do the right thing in the area. I spend my time attending city council meetings, county commissioner court meetings. The Wildcatter has allowed me to donate my time and resources to the Greenville Chamber of Commerce, FISH, CASA, the Greenville Firefighters Pension Board. Let me think, we've got the Ambassador Program, the Greenville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, Audie Murphy Museum, and CASA Children's Advocacy Center, and a lot more. But it's my role as Vice President of Community Relations that I'd like to talk with you about very briefly. As you know, Wildcatter is feverishly working, weather permitting, to finish the disc golf course. And as such, we would like to welcome anyone that has any questions, whether it be on social media, to please direct them to me. Feel free to call and say, Dennis Carpenter, my cellphone, eight one seven eight zero zero one one eight one. Y'all have my cards. Anybody that wants to dawn a pair of boots, I'll be glad to give them a personal tour out there. It is, it is muddy, but we would love to be able to do that. If I don't have the answer for you, I will get the answer for you. Growing up, I was a Boy Scout, and back then we were taught to be trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, cheerful, thirsty, brave, clean, and reverent. And if I meet with any citizen or any member of you, I hope you'll come away with saying that those things are still accurate today. That's all I had to share. Just wanted to apologize for not making it clear what it is that I do do, and if you need me, by all means, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
James Evans.
James Evans, sixty-four ten Buena Vista Drive, Greenville, Texas, seven five four oh two. Some of you probably think I'm here tonight to talk about the two-hundred thousand dollars that was moved from the employee salary fund last time you met to move it to the study for the possible Hotel Convention Center. That's not why I'm here for tonight at all. I'm here to talk about fluoride in the public drinking waters, what I'd like to discuss a second. Brief history for some of you that may not be aware of this history. Back in two thousand thirteen, the city of Greenville decided not to include, not to put fluoride in the drinking water. And the reason stated in a October twelfth, two thousand sixteen newspaper article by Mr. Brad Keller was that, get up a little bit closer here, it was too much wear and tear on the equipment, and that's why they stopped doing it. And that was what we discussed. I know, Mr. Ransome, you were on the council back at that time, too. We had several heated debates in some council meetings concerning fluoride in the water. And at a meeting on, back in two thousand sixteen, we decided with a vote of four to two, and Cedric Dean and I voted no against it. My reason was because I didn't feel like I had enough information on fluoride, the safety of it, pros versus cons, and I voted against it, and Mr. Dean did, too. The others voted to include it, and we immediately then started including fluoride in the water. What I would like to make call to your attention is this process, what had happened. And right now, U.S. Health and Human Services Secretary Robert F. Kennedy, Jr., is doing a lot of extensive research into fluoride in the public water system, pros and cons. The state of Utah has banned it completely from the entire state as far as public water supplies for drinking. And all I would ask you to do tonight, I'm not trying to make a decision or trying to influence you one way or the other, I just want you to know a little bit of the history of the fluoride in our drinking water, what happened to it, why we stopped, why we started back. And again, take a look at these studies coming out and do the best thing for me, for yourself, and for the citizens of Greenville, especially these kids that are growing up, the ones not born and the ones that are already here. That's all I'd ask. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay. Okay, we'll move right along to item eight A, consideration action on a resolution authorizing additional services, an additional services amendment with Barker Rinker Sea Cat Architect Firm in the amount of, let me turn the page, seventy-six thousand dollars.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you all. So this would be a design, for the design of the lease space at the front of the rec center that we'll be negotiating with Hunt Regional Healthcare. And so the cost of this would allow the city to own the design, tie it in with the rest of the facility, as well as what we would be doing during our negotiations is trying to recoup that cost through the negotiation process.
Any questions? Or Brett? Okay, I'll just ask, is there any public testimony tonight? Okay. Okay. What is then, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
A motion to approve.
Please vote. Consideration action on a resolution authorizing additional services, an additional services amendment with Barker Rinker Sea Cat Architect Firm in the amount of, let me turn the page, seventy-six thousand dollars.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you all. So this would be a design, for the design of the leased space at the front of the rec center that we'll be negotiating with Hunt Regional Healthcare. And so the cost of this would allow the city to own the design, tie it in with the rest of the facility, as well as what we would be doing during our negotiations is trying to recoup that cost through the negotiation process.
Any questions? Brett? Okay, I'll just ask, is there any public testimony tonight? Okay. Okay. What is then, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
A move that we approve.
Motion to approve. Please vote. Consideration action on a resolution authorizing entertainment agreements for Bottle Rocket Bash on July the fourth, twenty twenty-five in celebration with Blackbird Auto Pro John Viola Pro Text.
Yeah, Mayor, Council. Yeah, it's Pro Text. Yeah, Mayor, Council, this is for the Bottle Rocket Bash, so this would allow Summer to sign the agreements so we can get those guys booked up and ready to go. This was approved in this year's budget as part of this year's budget, and so we can now, we've got a place to launch fireworks for them. We're excited, so. Answer any questions?
So I'd seen online, there were some people questioning about, are we going to be holding it at the sports park?
Yes, sir.
So everybody on Facebook world, can you hear that?
Yes, sir. Yeah. I mean, it's not much different than our usual layout, but yes, it is at the sports park, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item eight C, consideration action on a resolution authorizing a change order with Adolphson Peterson for a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for the sports park and Reese Davis expansion project.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, this is concerning eight change requests, a smaller change request to make this change order, number four. And so the bulk of this change order is going to come from a structural design change that we had to make at the sports park. It is something that we did meet with them extensively on with Steve, Summer, GP, so we did negotiate with them. So essentially what it's going to do is take nine pounds per square foot, steel framed at twelve pounds per square foot. So we felt like there was some miscommunication on their part on some of that in that the existing structure was strong enough, but basically we were at the point to where if we pushed it back to redesign, it would have, we'd be paying the same for a lesser structure. So the upside is we are getting a sturdier structure for the sports park center, so. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions anybody might have about that.
Any questions? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
A second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item eight D, consideration action on a resolution appointing members to a hotel conference center ad hoc committee, and I'm going to appoint Philip Spencer and Tim Cruz to serve on that committee with myself. And I'd like, in addition to that, I'd like to, although Councilman Thomas is going to be off the council in about a month and a half, I'd like for him to participate as ad hoc on that committee after, after he's no longer on the council, so it won't create a quorum issue. So those are my appointments. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item eight D, consideration action on a resolution authorizing fifteen thousand square feet of concrete to be poured along with a twelve-by-twelve, with four twelve-by-twelve concrete pads at reservoir four.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I'm here to ask you if we can get a consideration action authorizing a fifteen thousand square foot of concrete poured along with the twelve-by-twelve pads. Basically, this concrete, if you look at the monitors, it'll go around the drive that enters into the reservoirs, so there'll be a nice flat surface. It'll be seven inches of concrete. There'll be fourteen inches total of dirt, or seven inches of dirt, seven inches of concrete poured on top of it for the heavier trucks that get in and out of there. The concrete will actually go all the way around and up to the gate, and then from there, we're going to add some asphalt and some concrete walkways that goes down to the piers that we talked about last city council meeting while I was here, for people that are, you know, that they're in their wheelchairs, it's all ADA approved, so this will help them get around a little bit better and actually get up and down to the, where the piers are and be able to go out on the piers and do some fishing. And then we also need to talk about approval of associated budgetary fund transfer for this project. This project, we had two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars allocated to it, and the floating docks were seventy-one, nine, and forty-four, and we're putting the wrought iron fence around everything where the chain link fences are, so they can't cut it or enter in places they're not supposed to be, and that was fifty grand. And the concrete work is at one-eighty-nine, so we need to be able to transfer some money out of a utilities account to this account, and it's, I think it was like fifty thousand or something like that, to be able to meet the, the one-eighty-four, to be able to get the concrete taken care of.
And the pads are in the area just to the west of the piers?
So there's going to be four pads. There'll be, you see the first, where the drive goes around, there's, there'll be two pads right in the middle of that, then they'll have picnic tables and trash cans bolted down to the pads so they can't walk away. And then there'll be another pad in between six and four, or the six reservoir, the outlet channel, and actually six itself, and then another pad to the left of six. So there'll be a total of four twelve-by-twelve pads out there that people will be able to use for, you know, picnicking or whatever they need to use it for.
Will any of the concrete be in the area where people, you know, they pull in, they want to use the picnic table? It's all dirt right now.
Right now.
Is there any of that that's going to be concreted?
The concrete won't go that far, and where the concrete stops, we're going to asphalt it and make it nice and smooth.
So that will be asphalted?
So, yeah, from where the gates are now, in between the two outlet channels is where the gate is. We'll open up that gate, and we'll actually move the gate back probably, I don't know, four or five hundred yards where the actual original gate was. All that'll be asphalted, so they'll be able to, you know, get to that area and fish in that area also, and then be able to drive or pull their car up and into that area and not have to walk so far, you know, for the people that have a hard time walking.
I assume we're not going to asphalt over the grassy areas?
No. Just the parts that are the road, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, we'll try to make it as green as we can, make a nice little park atmosphere for everybody.
That's great.
Any other questions? Not? Is there a motion regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve. A second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you all. Yes. I'd like to ask the city secretary to read the consent calendar.
City council meeting minutes for March twenty-fifth and a resolution authorizing a contract with municipal mosquito for mosquito management services.
Any questions on these two items? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. We unanimously approve the consent calendar. Item ten, city staff, city council reports, financial reports, GP.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I've been reviewing the December twenty twenty-four and January twenty twenty-five financial reports. So starting with December, at this point, we're twenty-five percent through the fiscal year. Beginning with a review of the general fund revenues and expenses, at this point, about nine and a half million received in revenues or twenty-seven point six nine percent of expected collections. You'll see at the beginning of the year, our property taxes will begin to carry us, especially. especially primarily through that February, March window, and then sales tax, at least the past two or three fiscal years, has then caught up and exceeded property taxes, but you'll kind of see that trend for the opening few months. So that's your biggest pool of revenue there, just over $4 million, making up 45%, and then sales tax right behind it with 33%. And then expenses are just below 5 million, or 14% of budgeted expectations. Again, reviewing that revenue expenditure relationship, you'll see kind of that the beginning first few months as our revenues shoot up, as those property taxes come in, and the sales tax consistently comes through the first few months, and then the budgeted expectations will pick up from there with a review of those numbers, public safety leading that figure. This is a review of those sales tax figures. The collections through December are up $220,513, or 7% when compared to fiscal year-to-date 2024. That's the 10-year chart that carries 2014 through 2025, showing that year-over-year growth. Our sales tax target for this year's budget was 12.2 million, with years to date actual sales tax a little above 3 million, leaving just over 9 million remaining sales tax to collect to meet budget. This is a look at that current period collections, which were a little above $1 million, which was an increase of 14.3% when compared to December of 2023. And then as a reminder, these sales taxes carry that lag effect where they were collected in October, reported in November, and distributed to the city from the state in December. This is a history of the December sales tax, and that shows the net payment received by the city. And you'll see we had a large increase from '23 to '24, and then that gradual growth that we've been discussing since about 2020. Reviewing our water and sewer, those are right where they need to be, at 25% through the year, at $7.6 million, just above 25%. If you'll remember, Newgin did that, did that study for us in order to support our new water wastewater bonds, so those increases in revenues are primarily sourced and going to go towards the debt service payment that we now have to make from this water and sewer fund. So that's why you'll notice this chart as we progress through the year is a little substantially higher than the prior year collections as seen in previous years. And so that water collection was just below 5 million, wastewater at 2.7 million, and then other fees, charges, and sales rounding that total out just below $10,000. And reviewing our hotel motel occupancy tax for December, this year is that blue line for '24, '25. It spiked up in December 2024 compared to December '23 with an increase of a little above 11%, just below $80,000. And then our average monthly revenue for the current fiscal year is just below $60,000, which is an increase of about 2.8% from the, from the same point in the prior year. So we're off to a good start here for the year for our hotel motel occupancy taxes. And then if no questions for the month of December, I'll roll on into January. And so at the end of January, at this point, we're 33% through the fiscal year. You kind of have that same story here as we previously saw, where we're meeting our budgeted expectations just a little above 33% at 11.3 million, and then our revenues are continuing to collect at 14.4 million, with that biggest pool being our property tax collections, which you saw in December, they were about low 4 millions, 7.7 million in January, and then we'll proceed to see those round off to our budgeted figure through, likely through February and through March, with sales tax being the biggest pool behind that. Looking at the expenses, public safety, still the biggest pool there with fire and police just above 7 million at 64% of budget. And then looking at the sales tax, still up for the month of January at 7% as we were in December, just below 300,000 for year-to-date when compared fiscal year-to-date 2024. And then again, there's that same chart that's just continued that same trend that we've seen in these reports with our sales tax target below, leaving a remaining sales tax to collect just above $8 million for the remainder of the fiscal year. There's that comparison cities chart, as well as our current period collections, which were a little above $1 million, or 9.23% when compared to January of 2024. And again, that lag effect, so we'll see that these were collected in November, reported in December, and paid in January. And then this is going to be that net, net payment received by the city chart that shows that same effect there that the December one had with a little bit of a less substantial jump, '24 to '25, but still an increase. And then again, 33% through the fiscal year, our water and sewer revenues are right where we want those to be, a little above 34%, making up 10.3 million, with that volume going down the left side of your screen at water, coming in at 6.5 million, wastewater at 3.7 million, and then other fees, charge and sales, charges and sales coming below And then last, that review of the hotel motel occupancy tax. It was just a little bit of a decrease there in January 2025, at just a little above $60,000, which was a decrease of about 3.5%, but overall for the year, we're trending slightly above 1%, rounding in an average monthly revenue just below $60,000 there. So our hotel motel occupancy tax still, still off to a budgeted start there. Any questions at this time? And then we'll, we should be on pace to review the February financial at the next meeting. At that point, we'll be caught up, as well as the quarterly sales tax data.
Any questions? For the February numbers, could you give us that breakout on sales tax?
Yes.
What areas of retail it comes from, that sort of thing?
Yep.
Please. Okay. Item 11, city council discussion, proposed agenda items, or any items the council would like to have discussed or proposed in the future. If not, you have board's mission minutes, keep Greenville beautiful, second quarter report, you have that, and we have completed executive session this evening, so this, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.